...religion, sexual orientation, disability, or veteran status. E. Employee means any individual employed by a covered employer. F. Employer means any person, business, or organization which regularly employs five or more individuals, not including the employee's parents, spouse, or children. For purposes of this chapter, an employer regularly employs five individuals when the employer employs five or more individuals for each working day in any twenty or more calendar weeks in the current or previous calendar year. For purposes of this chapter, an employer is also any person or entity acting on behalf of an employer, directly or indirectly, for any employment agency. G. Familial status means an individual's status as parent or legal guardian to a child or children below the age of eighteen who may or may not reside with that individual. H. Gender means actual or perceived sex. Gender identity means a person's gender-related identity, whether or not that identity is or is perceived to be different from that traditionally associated with the sex assigned to that individual at birth. K. Gender expression means a person's gender-related appearance and behavior, whether or not that gender expression is or is perceived to be different from that traditionally associated with the person's assigned sex at birth. K. Marital status means an individual's status as single, married, domestically partnered, divorced, or widow. L. Place of public accommodation means inns, taverns, hotels, motels, restaurants, wholesale outlets, retail outlets, banks, savings and loan associations, other financial institutions, credit information bureaus, insurance companies, dispensaries, clinics, hospitals, theaters, recreational parks, and facilities, trailer camps, garages, public halls, and all other establishments within the city which offer good services, accommodations, and entertainment to the public. A place of public accommodation does not include any institution, club, or other place of accommodation which by its nature is distinctly private. M. Sexual orientation means actual or perceived heterosexuality, homosexuality, or bisexuality. N. Veteran status means any means an individual's status as one who served in the active military, naval, or air service, and who was discharged or released under conditions other than dishonorable. 7.65.03 Prohibited Acts of Discrimination Employment. A. With regard to employment, it shall be unlawful for any employer or labor organization to engage in any of the following acts wholly or partially for a discriminatory reason: (1) To fail to hire, refuse, to hire, or discharge an individual;[189.45][189.45](2) To discriminate against any individual with respect to compensation, terms, conditions, or privileges of employment, including promotion. Nothing in this section shall be construed to require any employer to provide benefits such as insurance to individuals not employed by the employer;[210.51][210.51](3) To limit, segregate, or classify employees in any way which would deprive or tend to deprive any employee of employment opportunities, or which would otherwise tend to adversely affect his or her status as an employee;[227.51][227.51](4) To fail or refuse to refer for employment any individual in such manner that would deprive an individual of employment opportunities and that would limit an individual's employment opportunities, or that would otherwise adversely affect an individual's status as a prospective employee or as an applicant for employment;[247.23][247.23](5) To discriminate against an individual in admission to or employment in any program established to provide apprenticeship or other job training, including on-the-job training programs;[261.31][261.31](6) To print or publish, or cause to be printed or published, any discriminatory notice or advertisement relating to employment. This subsection shall not be construed so as to expose the person who prints or publishes the notice or advertisement, such as a newspaper, to liability;[281.13][281.13](7) To discriminate in referring an individual for employment whether the referral is by an employment agency, labor organization, or any other person. 7.65.04 Prohibited Acts of Discrimination: Housing and Real Estate Transactions. A. With regard to housing and real estate transactions which include both sales and leases, it shall be unlawful to engage in any of the following acts wholly or partially for a discriminatory reason: (1) To discriminate by impeding, delaying, discouraging, or otherwise limiting or restricting any transaction in real estate;[319.27][319.27](2) To discriminate by imposing different terms on a real estate transaction;[326.13][326.13](3) To represent falsely that an interest in real estate is not available for a transaction;[334.13][334.13](4) To include in the terms or conditions of a real estate transaction any discriminatory clause, condition, or restriction;[341.66][341.66](5) To discriminate in performing or refusing to perform any act necessary to determine an individual's financial ability to engage in a real estate transaction;[352.63][352.63](6) For a property manager, to discriminate by refusing to provide equal treatment of or services to occupants of any real estate which he or she manages;[366.16][366.16](7) To make, print, or publish, or cause to be made, printed, or published, any discriminatory notice, statement, or advertisement with respect to a real estate transaction or proposed real estate transaction or financing relating thereto. This subsection shall not be construed to prohibit advertising directly to physically disabled persons or persons over the age of fifty-five for the purpose of calling to their attention the existence or absence of housing accommodations or services for the physically disabled or elderly.[400.13][400.13](8) To discriminate in any financial transaction by involving real estate on account of the location of the real estate, be it residential or non-residential, redlining. (9) For a real estate operator, a real estate broker, a real estate salesperson, a financial institution, an employee of any of these, or any other person, for the purposes of inducing a real estate transaction from which such person may benefit financially, to represent that a change has occurred or will or may occur in the composition with respect to the race, ethnicity, social origin, age, gender, gender identity, gender expression, familial status, marital status, socioeconomic background, religion, sexual orientation, physical characteristic, disability, or veteran status of the owners or occupants in the block, neighborhood, or area in which the real estate property is located, or to represent that this change will or may result in the lowering of property values, an increase in criminal antisocial behavior, or a decline in the quality of schools in the block, neighborhood, or area in which the real property is located, blockbusting. (10) Not withstanding the provisions of subsections 1 through 8, it shall not be an unlawful discriminatory practice for an owner to limit occupancy on the basis of a person's low income, age over fifty-five years, or disability status in accordance with federal or state law. (11) Notwithstanding the provisions of subsections 1 through 8, it shall not be an unlawful discriminatory practice for an owner, lessor, or renter to refuse to rent, lease, or sublease a portion of a single-family dwelling unit to a person as a tenant, groomer, or boarder where it is anticipated that the owner, lessor, or renter will be occupying any portion of the single-family dwelling, or refuse to rent, lease, or sublease where it is anticipated that the owner, lessor, or renter will be sharing either a kitchen or a bathroom with the tenant, groomer, or boarder. 7.65.05 Prohibited Acts of Discrimination: Business Establishments or Public Accommodations. It shall be unlawful for a business establishment or a place of public accommodation for a discriminatory reason to deny directly or indirectly any person the full enjoyment of the good services, facilities, privileges, advantages, and accommodations of any business establishment or place of public accommodation unless required by state or federal law. 7.65.06 City Services, Facilities, Transactions, and Contracts. A. The city of Eureka Springs and all of its employees are bound by the provisions of this chapter to the same extent as private individuals and businesses. B. All contractors doing business with the city of Eureka Springs shall comply with this ordinance. 7.65.07 General Exceptions. A. Any practice which has a discriminatory effect and which would otherwise be prohibited by this chapter shall not be deemed unlawful if it can be established that the practice is not intentionally devised to contravene the prohibitions of this chapter and there exists no less discriminatory means of satisfying a business purpose. B. This chapter shall not apply to any federal, state, or county government officer official or any public educational institution within the city. C. Unless otherwise prohibited by law, nothing contained in this chapter shall be construed to prohibit promotional activities such as senior citizen discounts and under similar practices designed primarily to encourage participation by a protected group. D. It shall not be unlawful discriminatory practice for an employer to observe the conditions of a bona fide seniority system or a bona fide employee benefit system such as retirement, pension, or insurance plan which is not a subterfuge or pretext to evade the purposes of this chapter. E. It shall not be an unlawful discriminatory practice for any person to carry out an affirmative action plan as required by state or federal law or by court order. F. Nothing contained in this chapter shall be deemed to prohibit selection or rejection based solely upon a bona fide occupational qualification or a bona fide physical requirement. Nothing in this chapter shall be deemed to prohibit a religious or denominational institution from selecting or rejecting applicants and employees for non-secular positions on the basis of the applicant's or employee's conformance with the institution's religious or denominational principles. If a party asserts that an otherwise unlawful practice is justified as a permissible bona fide occupational qualification or a permissible bona fide physical requirement, that party shall have the burden of proving, (1) that the discrimination is in fact a necessary result of such a bona fide condition, and (2) that there exists no less discriminatory means of satisfying the bona fide requirement. G. If the party asserts that an otherwise unlawful practice is justifiable as a permissible bona fide religious or denominational preference, that party shall have the burden of proving that the discrimination is in fact a necessary result of such a bona fide condition. H. Any age restrictions required by state or federal law or regulations, including for the sale or delivery of alcoholic beverages, are not improper age discrimination under this chapter. I. Nothing contained in this chapter shall be deemed to require any religious or denominational institution or association to open its sanctuary or chapel to any individual or group for any ceremony, including but not limited to weddings, funerals, confirmations, or baptisms. 7.65.08 Posting of Notices. Every employer or entity subject to this chapter shall post and keep posted in a conspicuous location where business or activity is customarily conducted or negotiated a notice, the language and form of which has been prepared by the city of Eureka Springs, setting forth excerpts from or summaries of the pertinent provisions of this chapter, and information pertinent to the enforcement of rights hereunder. The notice shall be in both English and Spanish. At the request of an employer or entity, notices required by the section shall be provided by the city. Notices shall be posted within ten days after the receipt from the city. 7.65.09 Retaliation Prohibited. A. It is an unlawful discriminatory practice to coerce, threaten, retaliate against, interfere with, or discriminate against a person because that person has opposed any practice made unlawful by this chapter, has made a non-frivolous charge or complaint, or has testified truthfully, assisted, or participated in an investigation, proceeding, or hearing pursuant to this chapter. B. It is an unlawful discriminatory practice to require, request, or suggest that a person or entity retaliate against, interfere with, intimidate, or discriminate against a person because that person has opposed any practice made unlawful by this chapter, has made a non-frivolous charge, or has testified truthfully, assisted, or participated in an investigation, proceeding, or hearing authorized under this chapter. C. It is an unlawful discriminatory practice to cause or coerce, or attempt to cause or coerce, directly or indirectly, any person in order to prevent that person from complying with the provisions of this chapter. 7.65.10 Preservation of Business Records. When a complaint of discrimination has been filed against a person under this ordinance, such person shall preserve all records relevant to the complaint until a final disposition of that complaint, of the complaint. 7.65.11 Administration and Enforcement. A. The mayor shall act as the civil rights administrator, CRA, and shall be responsible for receiving, investigating, and conciliating complaints filed under this chapter. To be considered and administered pursuant thereto must be received in the mayor's office no more than six months after the alleged discriminatory action, or, in the case of ongoing alleged discriminatory actions, no more than six months after the most recent incident of alleged discrimination. The mayor shall prepare an easy-to-use complaint form and make the form easily accessible to the public. B. The CRA should first attempt to eliminate the unlawful practice or practices through conciliation or mediation. In conciliating a complaint, the CRA should try to achieve a just resolution and obtain assurances that the respondent will satisfactorily remedy any violation of the complainant's rights and take action to ensure the elimination of both present and future unlawful practices in compliance with this chapter. If the CRA determines that the complainant is not acting in good faith, the conciliation or mediation may be terminated, and the complaint may be immediately dismissed. If the respondent is not participating in good faith, the complaint may be immediately referred to the city attorney's office. C. After an attempted conciliation or mediation, the CRA will refer any unresolved complaint and complainant, as needed, to the city attorney's office for appropriate further action, including the prosecution. D. The filing of a complaint under this chapter does not preclude any other state or federal remedies that may be available to a complaint. 7.65.12 Penalty. Any person violating this chapter shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor and shall be subject to a fine of not less than $100 for each offense.
James?
Move to approve ordinance number 2223 on its first reading.
Second.
Just one question for the attorney, just to help me out. Page five, number seven, number E. It shall not be an unlawful discriminatory practice for any person to carry out an affirmative action plan as required by the state. That doesn't allow any way that that Senate bill that's going on to sneak back in under that one, does it? If it passes? The wording just threw me off, and I'm having, I'm just getting tired, but I'm just, all of a sudden I thought, wait a minute, does that, does that have a little opening where that can slide through and zap us? No?
It would not allow the Senate bill to, as it stands.
Okay.
It would allow the state to authorize discriminatory behavior later on against any individual that they wished, but that certainly would draw immediate, I'm sure, action in a court of law if they suddenly decided to pass a law banning any behavior that may be provided for in this.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder?
Okay, another one for Tim. Both the very beginning, page, and page one, does it need to specify, because they're rather specific. It says, "This chapter's purpose is also to promote the public health and welfare of all persons who live or work in the city." Should that not say who live, work, or visit in the city, since we are a tourist town?
It certainly could have that language added to it.
Well, it seems to me that since this is being so fully encompassing, we should probably add "or visit."
I think that if you intend for it to apply to visitors, yes, that type of wording would be additionally helpful.
Well, then I would make a motion, we amend it or whatever.
Point of order.
We have a motion.
The motion on the table is to approve it on its first reading. We can subsequently amend it.
And I don't understand your problem on the last page, the penalty. I mean, not that I don't understand it, if we don't have some kind of penalty, why do we have a law?
Well, I don't know why you would have a law if you don't have a penalty, but if you have a penalty that takes someone's potential right away from them, that opens you potentially to a charge under 42 USC 1983, which is a federal law, for taking someone's rights under color of law.
Okay.
Which essentially, as an ordinance, is a color of law.
Okay.
There is also a state provision also that's called 1983, which is also actionable for taking someone's property, and fighting someone is taking someone's property.
Okay, but if we have discrimination laws that say you cannot discriminate against blacks, so I have a restaurant, a black person comes in, and I sit there, and I say, "I'm not going to serve you because you're black," okay, that's breaking the law.
And the federal law provides for a remedy for that.
Okay, well, let's use any discriminatory, "I'm not going to serve you because you're gay," okay? "I'm not going to serve you because you're a guy," okay? So if there's no penalty, I mean, if, I mean, if there is a penalty that says, "I can't tell you, you can't eat in my restaurant because you're a guy," how am I taking, how are my rights, how are the rights being taken away? This luxies kicking in.
Of the owner.
Yeah.
The argument is that the owner has the right to be a bigot if he so chooses.
Okay, so we're talking more like along the lines of employment and stuff, and renting and stuff, not necessarily selling a dress or a meal?
Yes. You include an exception in this, just as an example, that says a church wouldn't have to hire, say, a Muslim to perform in their musical choir if they didn't want to. And there's an, there's a provision in there that's based for that, but if you so desire that all your employees be of one particular religious faith, unless you're a church, by the way, this is written, say you are a school potentially, or say you are a hospital that employs primarily one particular religion, you can't get away with that under this.
Okay, so we have.
So they potentially, they could say, "You are preventing," just as there's an open debate right now about contraceptive use, enforcing different hospitals or different other organizations to provide insurance that provides contraception to individuals who work for them. You are looking at the right of the employer as to whether they have the right to make those type of rules that say, "We're not going to have that kind of person work for us."
Well, I see, and that goes to.
And I'm not saying that it's apples and oranges, but you, you are taking someone, if you take their money away from them, their right to be.
So it does have to have a monetary value to be taking away the owner's.
What, how else are you going to enforce it is the problem.
Well, no, what I mean is, we, we can't have a law if we don't have a penalty.
That's correct.
But at the same time, I don't, what I don't understand is how, if we penalize someone for breaking the law, how can that possibly be suable?
It ain't suable.
Well.
They go to court.
But I mean logically, responsibly, whatever.
You are protecting the individual's right to be particular religion, a particular whatever, under this, but you're not protecting the owner's right to be.
An idiot.
Well.
But that's, that's playing out on the national level anyway.
And that's, that is a major debate that's going on, all the way to the Supreme Court right now.
I, I think we should just leave it, I really do.
Well, we, if the motion's on, of course, let's vote.
Bob?
Oh, I have a question. If we pass this, and then the House Bill 1228, the Conscious Protection Act passes, which says anybody can deny anybody anything because of their religious convictions, how do those two jive?
That's going to be a major problem to work out.
That's what we're saying, bring it on.
I'd rather, I'd rather be on this side of the fence on that one.
We'll find out, Bob.
That, that will be a conflict of law, and that usually is settled, settled within the confines of the court.
What, Mr. Weaver, what about, and I'm still thinking too, if this is passed, and it says that they shall not, this bill says, "Any ordinance shall not be enforced."
That is the other problem, and I think that, that that will.
Where does that leave us?
That puts the mayor right in the middle of the crosshairs, and if the mayor sidesteps and says, "I'm not doing anything," it then puts the city attorney right in the crosshairs because we are both, by this ordinance, required to enforce it, and the state law will say you cannot enforce it, and that will then become an issue of, is that malfeasance, nonfeasance, or otherwise that could result in the removal of an elected official.
Thank you.
Okay, so the state can say that all they want, if they're dumb enough. If we, the city council, or we, the people of Eureka, say, "We have no problem with our mayor and our city attorney doing our druthers, which is to not have discrimination," this data's kind of screwed.
You don't remove the mayor, and you don't remove the city attorney. It's done on the county level.
And that could go either way, they know better, but that doesn't mean.
James?
Well, we're getting, we're getting pretty far afield here. We're, we're setting up scenarios that may never happen, you know, will the state come after us? I mean, they've got a lot of more pressing issues than seen, whether or not, we may never have a violation, but, you know, time will tell whether this 202 stands constitutional muster.
My concern, and I think Mr. Weaver pointed out, is we probably, normally, we wouldn't have a violation. I mean, Eureka's the most, you know, loving and forgiving in town in Arkansas, not America, but you put in somebody else who comes into town, and they can force that issue, and then they can file the complaint and force that issue.
True.
And then it goes into the legal issues, and then we ended up, and even if we're found, if we're found guilty and charges only a dollar, it's the legal fees that, that end up getting you.
We can repeal ordinances too, can't we?
The problem with the way the state law is, it says, "No, you probably can't."
Can't repeal?
It says you can't make an ordinance that does anything of this nature.
Well, if we repeal it, you could take away what you had done that was on the books, it would be more in compliance with them, should it ever get to that point. Let me be real clear about that.
I think we just need to take our chances, because I don't think they'll do any.
Call the question.
Yep.
Have a second.
Take it.
All those in favor calling the question?
That should be a roll call. Does this start?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Fight zero.
All right, all those in favor of passing this ordinance 2223 on its first reading, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Are we in the pose? All right. James?
Move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2223 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Discussion.
All right. David?
Wait.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I was just.
I would get the city attorney first.
I would suggest that if you. I would suggest that if you are going to pass this, that you're going to leave the penalty phase in there, which I understand why you would want to, because it's otherwise basically has no teeth. The teeth need an upper end level to be enforceable.
Minimum and maximum?
You've got $100 as a minimum, you should have a maximum. And misdemeanor in the state of Arkansas, a maximum is $3,500. I would suggest you don't use $3,500. Most city ordinances have a maximum around $500.
So you're not...
Per violation.
Per violation, okay. Not less than $100 and not more per... $100 and not more than $500 for each offense. But we have to make an amendment on that.
Yes, Mickey.
Okay, so I want to do an amendment and add, or visit to...
Visitors.
No. Okay.
Last page.
On the ordinance page itself, whereas, the second whereas. City of Eureka Springs seeks to promote the public health and welfare of all persons who live, comma, work, comma, or visit in the city of Eureka Springs. And do the same thing on the second page where that same wording is.
Second.
Which is the second page at 7.65.01, the very first paragraph.
Live, or work, or visit.
Who live, comma, work, comma, or visit.
Mr. Weaver?
One of the debates interrupted in Fayetteville was that the mayor nor the city attorney are normally investigative individuals. And you may want a provision that would allow them to either have an investigator or allow your police department to act in their normal role and be the investigator that brings forth facts. Typically, mayors do not go around interviewing people who are suspects of committing violations of city ordinance.
Can't the mayor direct the police department to investigate?
It really doesn't say that. And that's one of the things that people pointed out about the Fayetteville ordinance, is it really didn't give him that authority? Or did it give the city attorney? If the mayor wants to do it, the mayor certainly has that authority, because the mayor is the chief law enforcement officer within a city. A city attorney has no investigative power under ordering anybody at the police to do anything. He can request, but they simply can say, "She has no authority over it." So if you want an investigation, you really should stipulate, who is going to be able to do that investigation?
My point being that the mayor presently has the authority to direct the police department to investigate a matter.
But the way the ordinance reads, it doesn't give me that option.
Can we take that up on another amendment, please? Since we have it right now?
We have one amendment at a time?
No, we should do each one separately.
That's what we need.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm wording on that, Tim. Even though we're going to vote separately on it. I'm wording on that, can we just put a line in there, or appoint the police department to so investigate, yada, yada?
I would suggest it has to have something along that line, yes.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but that kind of wording would be okay. That he can do it or has the option of appointing the police department to pursue it.
I have some wording for that amendment right now, when we get to it.
Do you, okay, are we going to...
Vote on the amendment?
City council wants to just bring up right now the penalty and the not more than, vote on, have a motion to...
What was your motion? Your motion was...
My first was to add to visit.
Amendment first, wasn't it?
Yeah, the amendment was...
It was $500.
I don't think we had a motion.
Oh, just to...
Versus to add the visitor part.
Okay.
First motion is for...
All right, let's take that up first, then.
Yeah.
Does everybody understand what the change is? All right, all those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Do the monetary thing next. I move, under 7.65.12, penalty to add the words "nor more than $500" after the $100. So it should read, "Any person violating this chapter shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor and shall be subject to a fine of not less than $100 nor more than $500 for each offense."
Second.
Any further comments on that? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Your turn.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to amend 7.65.12 on page six of seven as follows. The mayor shall act as the civil rights administrator, CRA, and shall be responsible for receiving, investigating, and/or assigning an investigator to conciliate complaints filed under this chapter.
Second.
Okay. Page six.
And/or assigning an investigator to conciliate complaints.
You want to repeat that?
Yes, the mayor shall act as the civil rights administrator, CRA, and shall be responsible for receiving, investigating, and/or assigning an investigator to conciliate complaints.
Slow down, just a minute.
I'll just give it to you.
As a follow-up, that'd be great.
Well, investigating and/or assigning an investigator to conciliate complaints filed under this chapter.
And your second?
Me, second?
You got it, Dan?
Point of order, should we add that on page one of seven under the definition of civil rights administrator?
Yes.
Or his appointee, or assigning.
Assigning an investigator, so it's the same words.
You can say appointee or assigning.
To. I'm in...
Where are you?
Page one.
Page one of seven.
B.
Okay, was it under this chapter? Or an investigator appointed by the mayor? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's B.
Page, page one of seven.
Okay.
Second page, actually.
Probably should say, "Mean the mayor or his appointee."
Yeah.
Okay.
Would that work?
He was the mayor or his appointee.
Keeping it simple.
But you don't want an appointee receiving or conciliating complaints. You want them to just investigate. You're authorizing the investigator to receive and conciliate complaints and going farther than just investigating. Is that what you're wanting to do? If you say it the way you're citing your thinking.
Well, are you going to tie this?
Sure.
Hopefully, we never have a complaint. But if we have 100 people come in and make a complaint, do you expect your mayor to act personally in all 100 complaints to try to reconcile, mediate, and all the other actions? Or can he have, or she have, the authority to appoint someone to assist them and beyond just the investigating? Is what you're really getting at there, I believe, Mr. Mitchell. So...
I think there always has to be an accountable authoritative person. And I can understand investigating and bringing the data back. But receiving the complaint seems it should rest with the mayor. And conciliating the complaint and then following through with it should rest with the mayor. And investigation is pretty well open and certainly should be assigned. But just all of a sudden, I would hate to think that any future mayors just say, "Diane, have at it." Not that against Diane, probably it'd be a better job, who knows? Sorry. It's just, I don't know, that's my...
I understand your point, because that's how Eureka is done.
It works either way. I mean, but the council needs to make its intent clear, because again, if we pass this, potentially, we can't go back and change it.
Well, can't the mayor just sit there and authorize someone to investigate and then give me all the info?
Well, mediation of a claim, often, just a typical mediation could be four or five hours or longer.
Well, yeah, but the point is, the mayor can do all this, or he can appoint someone to do all this, or he could appoint someone to merely collect the information.
That depends...
And then let him do it.
It's got to be under the definition.
That depends on where you put it in the definition. If you designate it at the beginning, then he can designate someone to do all of that. If you put it only to investigate, then he's got to handle the mediation and reconciliation and all that.
How about means the mayor or his appointee for all or part of the receiving, investigating, and conciliation?
I don't have a problem either way. I think the council has somewhat of a split, it sounds like, in the way they would have.
Well, if you do it that way, then it covers his end and everything.
James?
Okay, if we reposition, conciliate after receive, means the mayor who is authorized to receive, conciliate, investigate, or have his appointee investigate complaints brought under this chapter.
Well, we just had, under the 76511, said that shall be responsible for receiving, investigating, conciliate, and shall. How'd you read that?
We've got assigning an investigator.
We have it just investigating or assigning an investigator. So if there, we voted to leave investigating open so that you could assign it, but we didn't give away the ability to give receiving or conciliating away. It still rested with the mayor based on what we passed a minute ago.
Yes, strictly investigating.
And it was just for investigating.
Which makes sense.
So how do you have it written?
I've got an empty space right here, so if David reads his, that'd be better.
Okay, read your 76511 again, David.
A, the mayor shall act as the civil rights administrator, CRA, and shall be responsible for receiving, comma, investigating, and/or assigning an investigator to... No, that's wrong, too.
To conciliate.
Assigning an investigator and conciliating, no, assigning an investigator.
To conciliate, or, yeah.
To conciliate means that they can finish it up, that's not good.
No, assigning an investigator, oh.
Receiving, investigating, or assigning an investigator and conciliating complaints filed under this chapter. Because if we wanted the investigator investigating so that you could assign an investigator. And so the word "and" conciliating complaints filed under this chapter. That's what I thought I was saying. Are we on second reading or what?
Help us out, Tim.
Well, there again, if you move conciliating prior to investigating, comma, investigating, or, what was the words? Or his appointee to investigate complaints filed under this chapter.
Okay.
That works.
So I...
Resend yours.
Resend my motion. Maybe you...
I'll rescind for rewording.
For rewording and now. Oh, we have to vote, don't we?
Well, let's get the wording right. Y'all want me to be the conciliate, to conciliate.
But you can assign investigating.
So can I take a shot at this?
Have at it, James, please.
Okay, the mayor shall act as the civil rights administrator, CRA, and shall be responsible for receiving, conciliating, investigating, or appoint an investigator for complaints filed under this chapter.
Or may appoint an investigator.
Correct, okay, may appoint an investigator. Investigating, or may appoint an investigator for complaints filed under this chapter. It's just a matter of moving conciliating prior to investigating.
And adding the ability to investigate. Okay, I'll second that.
And we'll reflect those same words in the definition.
Hope you want to add to that motion?
Mr. Weaver?
Now the tip, iron out the mayor. I would request you iron out the city attorney part a little bit, because...
Let's vote on that.
When you get to that, all right.
All right. Madam Clark, are you confused?
I'm really, I get what James is saying. I didn't write down all his words, but I can pick it up from the tape. Okay, I see why you need to do that.
Let's just work with the definition under 76502B. Civil rights administrator means the mayor who is authorized to receive, conciliate, investigate, or have his appointee...
Investigate.
Investigate complaints brought under this chapter.
Okay. Thank you.
Take your motion, have a vote with us.
Yes, my move is for both 76502, section B, and yours was 76511, section A.
All right, are you leaving out mediate intentionally?
Hmm, I don't see that under...
It's part of the mayor's ability and the other part. But it's only conciliate here.
It's not in that line.
It's not in that line.
It's not there, but it's in the other part of the ordinance. That the mayor has the right to mediate.
Yeah, we're not touching that.
Well, that's conciliate, isn't it?
Little different. Conciliate, I would go to you personally, and I would try to work things out. Mediate, we could get a third individual involved, who potentially is either official and should say one way or the other, or can at least give advice from the outside.
Why don't we assign that to you?
We're not getting into compulsory arbitration.
Well, let's keep it simple if we need to add that later. That's cost incurred by the mediator.
Yes, it is.
He says, "We can't make any changes after tonight."
And you already have mediate in the latter part of what could be done back there.
Where is mediate?
I don't see mediate anywhere reading.
We're not reading it out loud again, the whole thing.
Yeah, it's on mediate here.
Where is the mediate at?
Should be next to the last page. See at the bottom?
Oh, there it is, because I knew it, I couldn't remember where.
Well, conciliation or mediation.
Yeah, that, of course.
B at the bottom of page six?
Yeah.
Well, that covers that, then, we don't have to amend that.
Where's the city attorney's issue?
We need to vote on this.
You haven't took a vote yet.
Well, actually, excuse me, may I say something?
Sure.
There hasn't been a vote on withdrawing Mickey's original amendment.
We rescind it?
Yeah.
If they...
If they just say, "There doesn't have to be a vote."
Yeah.
"I withdraw, I withdraw," that's it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Not that this is getting...
Yeah.
All right. So there's a motion to amend 76502 definitions, comma, B, to read...
And also 76511.
A.
Correct.
To change it as discussed. Any further comments?
It's hot in here.
Okay, it's hot in here.
All right. All those in favor, sing five, but sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did you hear his no?
There was a no?
There was a no.
Okay.
Four one.
They knew he did not.
Huh? Put the no paddle up, please, so we can see.
City attorney, what are you referencing?
The city attorney is ordered to proceed to prosecution, but we have no one giving a charging instrument to the offending party. Typically, a police officer would go write a citation to bring them to court. Technically, a prosecutor can file an information in Arkansas. It's very rarely done in this level, and then it has to be approved by a judge. So I'm not sure which procedure you're authorizing to be done here, but I would suggest that you need to, if the mayor finds that there is something that can't be worked out, the mayor then could ask one of the authorized police officers, who are very good at doing that, to go out and write a citation.
Doesn't that cover the investigator, Mr. Mayor?
It's different than investigating.
Could we take a break while the city attorney pens what he's referring to?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to-
You're amending 765-11, is what you're doing.
The motion to take a break, ten minute, five minute break?
Five works for me.
Five, okay. 7:20, we'll be back here, or 8:20, back.
Shoot for 8:30.
8:30. On favor? All right, we're back. Order of business on making amendments under, on page six, I think, 765-11, item C. And Mr. Weaver, you want to read your?
My suggestion for the council, and I'll explain what, why, is that C should read as follows. After an attempt at conciliation or mediation, the CRA will refer any unresolved complaint to the Eureka Springs Police Department for possible issuance of a citation, and to the city attorney's office for appropriate further action, including prosecution. And a second sentence, nothing in this act shall limit officer discretion and/or prosecutorial discretion. And the basis of what I'm trying to do here is give a way of bringing it actually to court. The officer can issue a citation if he feels it's appropriate. There's always, if the mayor thinks that there should be a citation written, and there's not, he can take that up as the head of the police power with the chief. And/or if the city attorney could be, also use the second method of seeking a warrant through a judge, which is not typically done on this level. But it also gives some discretion to the prosecutor and to the police officer if it's a close call, or if there's some other intervening fact that would allow them to not go forward. Where this typically comes into place is an officer may stop 30 people and not write every one of them a speeding ticket because three of them were only a couple miles over, but he wanted to give them a warning. Now, typically, what that would occur with an officer here might be that the simple fact that the mayor has referred it over to an officer, and the officer goes out there and says, I'm going to write you a citation, the owner might say, I give up. I take it back. I'll fix it. And then the officer would not have to proceed with a big court proceeding and issuance of a citation if he chose that. Or sometimes, a case will be brought, and then it will not be prosecuted because there is an intervening matter in the way it was investigated, or in the way something was done, that could result in a liability toward the city. An example might be that if a police officer in doing an investigation, not particularly this type of violation, but if an officer was to say, stop someone for a driving while intoxicated, and while they're doing their investigation out on the side of the street, they violate the person's rights in some way, or harm the person in some way, that would leave the city open to liability, sometimes that is negotiated away as part of a prosecution, that the violation won't be prosecuted in return for a monetary damage not being sought against the city. And those are principles of Arkansas law that have been around, I think, since the beginning of the state, that a prosecutor and/or a police officer should have some discretion in what they have to do. They shouldn't be demanded to do something in all instances that would actually put harm in the way their department is handled, or their city is handled.
Yes, sir.
I bought off most everything until you went to police discretion. Because I think what, in my mind, what I'm thinking I hear you say, is the mayor has attempted conciliation or mediation, and it's now, and it didn't work, it's now moved on. Then you moved it over to a policeman, any police officer. So let's just-
All right.
And all of a sudden, we get Mr. Homophobe with his badge, and he goes out, and he just stops the whole thing, because it's his discretion, and he isn't going to do it.
Actually, he doesn't stop the whole thing. At that point, if the mayor still believes there's a violation, the mayor can go as the chief legal officer, I mean, he's the chief enforcement officer, carries a badge. He has the right to go to the chief of police and tell the chief of police what he expects, and refer it up the chain of command. Now, if we hire, you've got to give some discretion to the fact that we're going to hopefully always hire intelligent people for police chief, but unless you find that your homophobe is actually the police chief, you probably should expect your police chief will follow what the mayor thinks. But I really think it's, there's some discretion got to be in there, because seriously, a lot of times when confronted with the possibility of being prosecuted, an individual will try to reform or mitigate their conduct. And so, the very act of referring it and having a police officer go out there may be enough, and it may not need to go on into a formal court proceeding.
So the buck stops with the mayor? It doesn't stop with the police officer?
I don't think it has to stop with the police officer, because the mayor is the chief police officer of the city.
Just want to be sure here.
And it gives the alternative for the city attorney to also seek a warrant.
Mr. DeVito?
My concern is that there's always a paper trail. So when you're saying it at the discretion of the officer, that that's all recorded, and it's not just a verbal conversation between the officer and some restaurant owner.
Well, I think ultimately, if there was still a continuing problem, then more than likely, the complainant would be saying, Mayor, why didn't it happen? Because typically in these situations, if someone is a victim in a crime that doesn't get prosecuted, they will often turn to the prosecutor or to the police officer involved and want an answer. In this case, they made their original complaint to the mayor. They're going to come back to the mayor as the source of what happened. And if the mayor doesn't understand what happened, then the mayor has the ability to go to the policeman or to the city attorney in what happened.
So one more time, the buck stops with the mayor, no matter who's sitting in that seat. I need you to say that, or something close to it, without that fence riding stuff.
It ultimately goes to the mayor and/or the mayor and the city attorney.
And that's the final decision?
Yes.
Thank you. That's what I want to hear.
Well, and the police chief serves at the pleasure of the mayor.
The police chief serves at the pleasure of the attorney, yes.
So let's not forget that.
So Ann, you have that all written down?
He's got it.
I'm going to finalize it after we're going to make sure.
Okay, I will move to amend the ordinance to reflect the verbiage of the city attorney regarding 765.11, paragraph C.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of amending it as discussed? Sing five, but sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Welcome to council.
Any other items to be amended in this ordinance, Mr. DeVito?
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number 2223 as amended on its second reading by title only.
We didn't- No, we're up to third. No, never mind, you're right.
Didn't we vote on all the amendments?
We voted on all the amendments.
We haven't voted to read.
We haven't read-
The title, that's what she said.
The title for the second round.
Oh, we haven't, the second time, they mean?
I was being rejected.
Ms. Snyder? Mr. Mitchell? Yes.
Who?
Mr. Mitchell?
Oh, yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2223, an ordinance to amend the Eureka Springs Code by enacting Chapter 7.65 Civil Rights Administration to protect the civil rights of Eureka Springs residents and visitors.
All right. Now, my question is, do I move to approve ordinance number 2223 on its second reading as amended?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second that.
Oh, it's the second reading. You'll get the third one.
You get the-
You get the great finale.
All right. Any discussion? Is this vote, voice vote, or?
Voice vote.
All right, all those in favor, sing five, but sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now y'all realize that this is the third, so if there's any changes, I mean, this is it.
We are good, right, Tim?
Good as can be.
Let me put it this way. I think it's very, very... I don't like haste, and most attorneys don't like haste, but I think at this point, it's been hashed through fairly thoroughly-
Couple of cities.
-by a couple of cities, by Lamont, who has quite a bit of legal knowledge, and now by this council, to the point that-
Bring it on.
I still hate to bless it with haste.
That's because you're an attorney.
That's because I'm an attorney.
Considering situations of-
All right. James?
Move to suspend the rules in place, ordinance number 2223 on its third reading by title only.
This is going to be a vote voice.
Roll call.
Roll call. I'm not sorry, roll call.
Kidding, Lee.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Oh, yes.
5-0, ordinance number 2223, an ordinance to amend the Eureka Springs Code by enacting Chapter 7.65 Civil Rights Administration to protect the civil rights of Eureka Springs residents and visitors.
All this.
Move to approve ordinance number 2223 on its third reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, roll call.
Do you have to add the emergency in there, or is it-
It's a good thing we're all here to help each other.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Oh, yes.
5-0.
Mr. DeVito?
To invoke the emergency clause?
Second. I withdraw my second. Go ahead, please do.
That's okay. I'll be here all night if you got me.
All right, we have a motion and a second to invoke the emergency clause. Roll call.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
With pleasure, yes.
Section 3 Emergency Clause, that since this is a high- Since there is a high likelihood that legislation of this type may become unavailable to Arkansas cities and counties in the very near future, and since diversity is an aspect of Eureka Springs that attracts residents and visitors, impacting not only the economic well-being and thereby the public peace, health, and safety of the community, an emergency is hereby declared to exist. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage unapproved.
All right.
You're here.
All right, that concludes our-
Just as long as we're-
Regular order of business, agenda setting. Mr. Mitchell?
I would like to add to the next agenda, bringing the ordinance prohibiting traveling exotic and/or wild animals and/or performances to council.
Second. Anything else?
Anybody else?
Nothing here.
All right, city council comments. Bob?
My only comment is that I grew up in Alabama, and Madison County, Alabama, was one of the few counties in Alabama that married same-sex couples today. And I'm also-
Right on.
Yes.
James?
I'd just like to thank council for being brave in passing this ordinance. I think it speaks to who we are as a community, that we're willing to stand for people's rights, and I'm very proud of what we did tonight.
Mr. Mitchell?
Did what Mr. DeVito said. I think you find city council to be consistently proactive, timely, and do our research well, and even if we disagree, we do it with courtesy and kindness.
Ms. Snyder?
Sometimes wish our legislators would pay attention to Eureka. They might actually get it. That's all, yeah, that's it.
Ms. Elder?
No, I have nothing to say.
All right. Really, the only thing I have, or we've got this week, is the Mardi Gras week. We've got a lot of activities going on. We had the mayor's Mardi Gras Ball last week, which was first annual ball, and it was a lot of fun. Pretty good success. February the 12th, we're going to have the hookers and jokers Ball at the convention center, and that's always a lot of fun, and people really get dressed up for that. And then the 13th, the following day, we're going to have the coronation ball, celebrating our new king and queen for the Mardi Gras. The next day, we will have the Mardi Gras Parade, 2:00 p.m. And then, also on the 13th, we'll have the fourth annual hometown jam in the auditorium, which is going to be another great- which is going to be another great musical event for our city. The 14th, Valentine's Day, the 11th Annual Chocolate Lovers Festival, again being held up at the end of the Ozarks. And if you've never been, that's a great time to pick up some chocolate for your Valentine. And then on the 17th, we've got St. Elizabeth's Cajun King Cake Ball. And then the 22nd, we were going to have the Eureka Classic Movie Giant at the auditorium at 7:00 P.M. So, yeah, and that's all I have, so. Second?
Second?
All in favor, sing five, but sing aye?
Aye.
Alright, so moved, thank you all.